Good evening, the time is seven PM and I will now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on December sixth. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you both. Any errors, changes, omissions on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. All right, next up is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. I do have one change. Under new business, we're going to have a new item B, which is going to be discussion on engine number three. And so, current item B, which is the antique MAC number four fire truck, will become item C and then so forth down. So with that change, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I approve the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, next up is communications and correspondence. I don't have anything under communications and correspondence this evening. So we will move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment publicly? If so, you can come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, Michael Tierney, eighteen Rogers Road. Michael Tierney, eighteen Rogers Road. And then just for the record, I'm speaking as an individual, not town clerk. So, I just wanted to just briefly speak in favor of transferring old engine four, the antique MAC, to company two. As I see, it's on the agenda tonight. This truck was restored by the fire department members at their expense many years ago, based on a handshake agreement under the Kalinowski administration. And I feel that it's, you know, overdue to make it official and transfer the truck to them, especially because the precedent was set in transferring the antique engine three, the forty-seven MAC, to company one many years ago. This truck's part of Portland's rich firefighting history. The fire truck is, the fire department is best, the best group to maintain custody of the truck and preserve it. You know, they've used it for many parades, funerals for their members, Santa's written on it. And we want to certainly keep it in town. And we're really lucky to have such a wonderful volunteer fire department. And the men and women who are involved in the town each and every day, you know, they're, they're an asset to our town. And this is something that we can do to give back to them and just say thank you. So I would encourage the board to take steps to expedite the transfer of the, of the truck to them. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Michael. Does anyone else wish to comment publicly?
Susan Malecki, fifteen Gilder sleeve road. I just wanted to thank the town crew for the wonderful job that they did removing trees during the recent storm. We had a big tree fall next to our house, was across the road. And by the time I was getting ready to leave, the tree was taken care of. So, I'm sure that they had to work really hard because things were a mess in town. But, so, something positive.
Thank you, thank you. And I agree, yesterday was our holiday party at town hall. And I said to our public works director, Ryan O'Halpin, none of our public works crews were at the party. I said, where, where is everybody? And he says, they're cutting down trees for EverSource right now. And so, you know, I, well, we're gonna have to do something else for them instead because they do work hard, so thank you. Any other public comment? All right, anyone online that wishes to comment? Okay, great. I know PJ is here, so we'll move to our monthly report on the committee on solidarity. Thank you for coming, PJ. I know we missed the month of November because we had a special meeting instead, so, what's going on?
All right, hello, hello everyone. Once again, just want to thank you guys for your continued support and backing for the committee on solidarity. We greatly appreciate it. Coming up, we are working with the historical society to do an event on February twenty-fourth at the library on, for Black History Month to discuss the, the black history in Portland, with the oral history being spoken and some different displays given by the historical society. April twentieth, we have coordinated with the Stonewall speakers. They're a CT group of speakers that speak to LGBTQ interests. So they're gonna discuss, do a panel on visibility and community inclusion. And then, once again, Juneteenth, planning gets full in effect. We have a date of June fifteenth. And Dr. Britton has gave us a commitment that we can use the middle school and high school so we don't have to worry about weather this year. And we'll have a nice, you know, area that we can fully maximize. And that's really about it.
That's awesome. And the February twenty-fourth event, where is that?
That's gonna be at the library.
At the library, thank you.
That's correct, yep.
Great, awesome. You guys are busy as always.
Yeah, we're trying to keep everything going, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anything, no?
Good job.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item B under old business, which is appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. And let me see, do you have appointments?
Yes. We start with the conservation commission. Our first is Joe Spada.
I, I cannot hear you.
Can you, so you're just talking, sorry, the fan's going.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's just loud, sorry.
Conservation commission, the first person we have for nomination is Joe Spada.
Is a regular member?
Regular member.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Next, for an alternate, we have Peter Lord.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Good guy.
Good guy, he is a good guy. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Next we have for a full member, Norm Ward. I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
We'd like to put another individual up on the floor as well.
Okay.
Nancy Brought.
Okay.
I'm a regular.
And second, motion made, seconded. Okay, so we have two nominations. Any, any further discussion on, on this?
So, I, I don't, I don't know Nancy that well.
Nancy's, Nancy's currently an alternate on the conservation commission. We just felt that it was appropriate for them to move her up to a full member. But I understand we have contest here, so we just want to make sure we put them both up here.
So the way this works is we put it to a voice vote, the first nomination, the first nominee gets voted first. And then if that does not get approved, then we go to the second nominee. So the first nominee would be Norm Ward, so all those in favor of Norm Ward signify by saying aye. Okay, so that's what, one, two, put your hand up so I can just count, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, and any abstentions?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
I'll abstain on that.
Okay, so did you get that five yes for Norm Ward, two abstentions?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so we move on now.
For the economic development commission, for a full member, Angela Hammett.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Again, economic development commission for a full member, Karen Renner. I'll second that.
All those in, or any discussion, sorry?
Want to make sure we have Sarah Whedon for reappointment?
Okay, okay, well, that would be a different nomination. I guess you could put them up.
Well, I think this one we would put up probably Rose on this one, right? I don't think Sarah's in contention, so I'd like to, so you want to nominate Rose?
We'll put up Rosa Letta.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded for Karen Renner, I believe, and a motion made and seconded for Rosa Letta. So any further discussion before I call for the vote? No? Okay, seeing none. As many are in favor of Karen Renner for a seat on economic development, signify by saying aye. Or, I get a show of hands, so, all right, any opposed? Any abstention, two abstentions. So, it's Karen who's appointed.
Economic Development Commission, full member, Sarah Whedon.
So we're, you'll do it, you guys want to second that?
We'll second that.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, I think John got the second.
No, I wanted to make sure we got her in there.
Yep, yep. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right.
Emergency management nomination for Rob Puida, who is the new fire chief.
I'll second it.
Jim.
Bob, you can't object out there. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? And we welcome Rob, so.
Emergency management, full member, Jane Clembo. I'll second that.
John, get the second. Any discussion? Jane is with the CERT team. This is part of our emergency management group. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Great.
Ethics commission for full member, Donna Cody.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Donna Cody. For inland wetlands commission, as an alternate, Peggy Keizer.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Long Range Capital.
We have others on inland wetlands?
Oh, you want to go, yeah, we can do that.
Well, I just want to make sure we get the names out there.
Do you want to do, yeah, you can do that.
We, we have three individuals. It sounds like I could just put the three of them up right now.
If you want to, yeah.
We have Moreno Doherty for reappointment, Nancy Brought for reappointment, and John Flynn for reappointment.
And I'll second them.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Long Range Capital for full member, Chris Donahue.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Long Range Capital, a full member, Tim Lavoy.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do you want to do?
We have two. I'll go, for appointment, Long Range Capital, Michael Agalati.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Anybody in the audience? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And appointment to Long Range Capital, Raymond Sajak.
I'll second it.
Great, well, good candidates. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Parks and Recreation, full member, Amy Leary.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries.
Once again, Parks and Recreation, full member, Reagan Fitzgibbons.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
Is this, this is the current vacancy, the new vacancy that we encountered? I'd like to put up a name as well, Ms. Jillian Crawford.
And I'll second that.
Okay, two names have been put forward. Any discussion on this before we call for the vote?
Yeah, I, I hope, you know, Jillian gets some consideration. She currently very active. She's part of some youth in town, which is sorely needed. She's a kid who's gone through the Portland schools and has worked in the Parks and Rec. And she also currently volunteers at the senior center. So she's somebody who's already active doing these types of activities. One of the things when we lost Kevin Backman off of Parks and Rec, is somebody who shows up at every event. And they need the folks that do those work, because that's what makes that, that team work as well as it does. Jillian has proven that she will, she'll do that.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion before we call for the vote? All right, as many are in favor of, it's Raymond?
Reagan.
Reagan Fitzgibbons on Parks and Recreation, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Actually, show of hands, one, two, three, four. Any opposed?
We'll abstain.
Okay, so three abstentions.
Felton.
Right, before we move on, we do have a vacancy in the alternate.
Actually, you went to Deb Ruth as a reappointment first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed Deb Ruth. Trying to, I'm bouncing all around here. I have Park and Rec, I'd like to put forward Deb Ruth's name.
And I'll second that.
Great, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, we had mentioned Jillian Crawford. We still have an alternate vacancy. And I'd like to put Jillian Crawford up for that alternate position.
Is there a second?
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Planning and zoning for full member, Jennifer Talone.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Abstention?
We're just trying to figure out where that's, where that fits in. We have three individuals we're putting forward here. Is that one of those positions? If it is, we need to put someone.
Well, we, we already, we went to the vote on that one. There would have been a discussion to put up, you know, another, so do you want to abstain or we could take a vote?
I'll abstain.
Yeah, I'll abstain. I actually don't know the individual, so.
Okay, I believe the individual is currently an alternate on planning and zoning. Okay.
Okay, I've got, I've got a few I want to put forward for planning and zoning. You got, you have more over there?
Yep, well, we can, I'll go ahead.
That's why I'm mix and match. Okay, I'll put, for a regular member, planning and zoning, Chantel Foster.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
I have another for reappointment, planning and zoning, Victoria Tetchich.
Tetchich.
Tetchich?
I'll second.
Great, any discussion on Victoria? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Now, we have a third position here. Is that, was that already taken care of?
I think so. There, we have, if I'm not mistaken, there's two alternate positions that are still open right now?
Yes.
So.
We have Carolyn Freeman. Can we, can we put Carolyn as an alternate?
Absolutely. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
For planning and zoning, alternate, Brian Anzalotti.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Senior Citizen Advisory Board, we have for full member, Janet Kalani.
Kalangi.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And for senior advisory board, we put forward Rosalani Ferguson for reappointment? Rosalani Ferguson for reappointment, regular member to the senior advisory board.
And I second it.
You're doing all right, Sharon?
Tell us to slow down, because it would help me too.
He'll give me a list, uh.
All right, I'm sorry, so Rosalani, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
For water and sewer, full member, Rick Shar.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, we'll move on to the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
And for a regular member, water and sewer, Dave Kozminski.
I'll second.
Guess you gotta give him something to do instead. Awesome, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Youth Services for full term, Ann Whalen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I think Ann has served as an alternate previously. Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And for Youth Services, full member, Margaret Stewart for reappointment?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And for Youth Services, reappointment to full member, Deborah Calabas.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Zoning Board of Appeals, full term alternate, Bob Wilderwood.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And for Zoning Board of Appeals, full term reappointment, Barbara Sequenzia.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
And for appointment, Cynthia Roman.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
We've got a couple, we've got, I've got a few here. You want me to do those? Veterans Affairs, we would like to put forward Robert Hunter as an alternate.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on Robert?
I'll just add that this is, this came from Bill Wilensky. Bob is actually married to a current member, and he's already active on the committee.
He's married to a current? Is there any conflict with that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. He's, he's retired, he's Navy, retired Navy. He's gonna be a good fit. Bill Wilensky would like to have him on the committee.
Have we had a husband, I, I, I didn't know that he was married to a current. Have we had a husband and wife on that committee together?
Sure, I can't, you know, we've had family members on common boards before. I can't imagine it's gonna be, it's an issue.
So this would be as an alternate, but his spouse is a regular member? I mean, I'm not opposed to the individual, I just, I don't know, I mean.
I don't, I don't believe there's a, I wouldn't see how there would be, I don't think that there would be a conflict there. The conflict would be if he was gaining personal gain. That's, that's not the, that's not the situation. He's already active, he already attends the meetings. And, and the chairman would, would like to have him on the committee.
I don't know, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't mind just postponing that, just to look into it. You know, I, I just, that kind of is something that I can't recall has ever happened before. There's a husband and wife on the same committee?
I, I, you know, I, I can remember when we had, you know, mothers and, you know, you know, we've had, we've had relatives on the board of selectmen before. It's not.
That's true.
I don't, I don't see, there's nothing in, that I'm aware of in the chatter of the ethics that would, would stop it.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm a little hesitant on the precedence.
If you want to, if you want to.
Want to table it till next, next time?
Yeah, I wouldn't, just to, will you look into it a little more before, if you guys don't mind?
John, I'm okay with it, if you make it more comfortable. Okay, and I've got a couple more. Housing Authority, regular member, Daniel Whedon, for reappointment?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And Housing Code Board of Appeals, regular member, reappointment. Give Michael Agalati something else to do.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on Michael? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Okay, and I've got Library Board, reappointment.
Okay, and I've got, um, library board, uh, reappointment, regular member, Melissa Kelly.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Uh, library board, reappointment, regular member, Myra Finkelstein.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. And for appointment to library board, Alanka Castelli.
I will second it.
All right. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. One last thing before I forget about it. We, the first item we did, we put forward Nancy Brawl for appointment on conservation. She currently is an alternate.
Mm-hmm.
Can we put her, can I put forward to put her back as an alternate?
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, I, I'll make the motion that we, uh, put Nancy Brawl back as an alternate on conservation commission.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Good catch, John. Is that all for nominations? I think. We're trying to refresh scribble. I, I don't think we missed anything. But I just want to say a big thank you to everyone on this, on the list and, and those who have served on boards and commissions, that these are volunteer members of the community. There's no, there's nothing but, you know, late nights, you know, for, for these members, and they do so much good work for the town. And I, our, we wouldn't be able to, you know, be up here without the volunteers on all these boards and commissions, and we wouldn't be able to have the community that we do. So, I just, I want to thank all of the people that are volunteering their time to serve, and I know you all on this board feel the same way, so I just want to say thank you. And I would just like to say thank you to, and I'm sure it's the same with the Republican Town Committee, the nomination, the groups that handle these nominations, they work to tail off for months, in some cases trying to chase people down to, to find out if they're still in or out. It's a heck of a lot of work, and I just want to give them kudos. And thank you very much for what you did. Yeah. Thank you. That's a good, good call. All right. Well, with that behind us, we can move on to new business. So, item A under new business is a revision to the non-union administrative pay plan for fiscal year 2023 to 2024. This is a little housekeeping due to the minimum wage that's set to increase as of January 1, 2024. So, the changes in here are highlighted for you. Uh, if you'll notice, the, the positions affected by this change are Town Tech Summer Worker 1, which is going from fifteen fifty to fifteen sixty-nine per hour, and Worker 2, which is going from sixteen fifty-two to sixteen dollars and seventy cents an hour, and Parks and Rec Youth Services Counselor 1 is going from fifteen dollars an hour to fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents an hour. Fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents is the new minimum wage as of, uh, January 1. Counselor 2 is fifteen dollars thirty cents to sixteen dollars. Counselor 3, fifteen dollars ninety-one cents to sixteen dollars fifty cents. Uh, Counselor 4, sixteen sixty-three to seventeen dollars. And, oh, I also do want to point out that we do have a new position in this pay plan that we've added, which is a technology director, and so you'll notice that position is in the pay plan. Um, that is due to a, an expected, uh, long-time retirement that is coming up, so we do have to hire someone new here. Uh, every fifty years we do that. And then, uh, election worker, the minimum wage went from fifteen dollars to fifteen sixty-nine. So. I'll move to resolution, if you want me to read it?
Uh, if you can, you can.
It's short. Okay. Uh, resolution, Board of Selectment, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Non-union administrative pay plan for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Resolved that the 2023, 2024 pay plan for non-union part-time specialists, seasonal employees, and administrative professional executive and elected officials, as outlined on the attached, be and is hereby adopted with the following revisions: incorporation of a technology director's salary, and the Connecticut minimum wage adjustments that are tied to the percentage change in the federal employment cost index effective January first, 2024, affecting seasonal employees and election workers.
I'll second it.
Thank you both. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is, remember, a new item B on the agenda, which is a discussion on Engine 3. We do have our fire chief, we have, uh, several other members of our fire department here with us this evening, but I, I thought it was important. I originally was going to talk about what's going on with Engine 3 under our, later on in the meeting, under status and committee reports, but I, I think it's worth a full discussion now on, on the state that, that we're in, and, uh, our Engine 3 is, is basically, and Bob will come up in a minute, but it's, it's beyond the state of repair, and, actually, Bob, if you want to come up now, because I want to get the numbers right. I believe it was two hundred thousand dollars that were, up to two hundred thousand dollars plus another fifty potentially of contingency. So, we're looking, if we were to fix our Engine 3 right now, we're looking at approximately up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars to repair a, a thirty-year-old truck. So, it's probably not the most practical, uh, move at this point, and so, we're gonna have to look for a, a new fire engine for Company 3, and the, the work has already kind of begun on that, and, uh, so I, I asked Bob to come up tonight to kind of go over where we're at and the, the status of, of everything, so. And Bob is, uh, is looking forward to January first.
There I am again. So, uh, yeah, in a nutshell, we lost, uh, the tank on Engine 3. It split. Um, returning from a call probably two and a half months ago. So, in the meantime, uh, we worked closely with one of our body, um, company's, our repair shop, Firematic out of Rocky Hill. We were able to quickly get the truck in there, and we had to disassemble, uh, uh, disassemble the tank, uh, from the truck, and, uh, doing so, hoping that we had about a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar repair, um, being able to replace, um, the existing tank and, and doing some rework that we felt necessary for strapping and, and the securing of the rails and things that go along with securing a thousand-gallon water tank on a fire truck. Um, we found that the body was in disrepair, based on the age of the truck. So, significant, um, damage, some of it, um, causing the damage to the tank, um, uh, to the body rails, frame substructure of the body, as well as the, um, tank frame that cradles the tank in was completely rusted out, uh, to the point where there are holes through some of the major structures, um, of the body. So, um, after a complete review, um, from the, the repair facility, um, you know, we were looking at a very difficult way to estimate repairs. The body was built not as a unibody years ago, which means that a unibody can be taken apart in pieces, and pieces can be repaired while others that do not need to be repaired can remain. Unfortunately, this particular body of the truck is welded altogether, including all the cabinets right to the weld, right to the frame structure itself, so, um, a very difficult rebuild. Basically, the truck, um, at his age, will have to have a body completely rebuilt. Our estimates ranged anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. No way to peg down, but certainly two hundred thousand dollars was kind of the mark where they thought that it would be. So, we looked at the age of the truck. We looked at some of the factors in relation to, um, building a new body, obviously, but fastening it to the existing chassis that is of that age, and there were some recommendations that there may be some difficulty doing that as well. We also, at that point, uh, found that, um, by changing the chassis or the body that's gonna be part of that chassis, based on that amount of work, that we would have to comply to new DOT standards with the truck. So, with that said, we might have to do upgrades such as, um, anti-lock brake systems. We might have to add some safety features that really weren't, um, just really weren't feasible to really look into doing to a truck that, of that age. So, we're in that situation now. So, we really didn't feel, um, and I think the discussions that we had, I didn't feel that it was worth putting taxpayers' money into a truck that that's old, because what we would be doing is, we've already had issues finding replacement parts for the chassis, motor, and components for that truck when we had to make repairs. As a matter of fact, we already have parts on there that we had to purchase from a junkyard, because they're no longer available. So, we decided that, in a nutshell, it's not, it doesn't make perfect sense, especially for the taxpayers and what we need to do, to move on to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar repair for a truck that's really that old.
What's a new truck like that go for?
So, um, we've been struggling, and you've taught, and, and you know how we struggled with Engine 2. So, we've been working closely, and we've had some, I requested some assistance through consulting, because it's just, the, the situation now, John, is the fact that you can call, and you can talk to any dealer out there related to fire trucks. They simply will say, we may have a truck that can help. We can't really give you a price. We can't give you a time it'll be available. We just don't really know, because the prices and the trucks are changing so quickly, you have to almost have an agreement to get them into bed to where we can get some good ideas. Well, we've done some significant homework over the past. I'll tell you, right now, we've engaged help, um, to do this for us, and just with six and six to eight hours of aggressive work, we found a number of five twenty-five that we feel has got enough contingency to be able to get us to a new truck. Now, with that said, it's difficult, because we're replacing a truck that has to fit in a firehouse that is extremely limited.
Yeah.
So, with that said, it's gonna be a basic commercial cab, two-seater. It's gonna have to have the water that we need to have on the hill to continue our ISO rating, which helps our taxpayers with their taxes. These, this particular truck that we're trying to lead towards that may be available before the end of June, um, has all those functions. Uh, we are going to squeeze it into that firehouse if we have a chance and are able to fund this truck, uh, to replace Engine 3. It's got more water, believe it or not, and it fits the footprint, uh, basically to get the job done. It has a bigger pump. It's gonna carry more water, which will help us in the, in the country, and it's gonna fit in its existing footprint by about a foot.
And just for the record, for those that may not understand the issue with that truck, for the houses out in the country that don't have access to hydrants, that is the lifeline, correct?
It is. It, it serves as your first-line defense suppression, along with our tanker that's out there. We have to carry a minimum of four thousand gallons on wheels out there, so it's important that we have at least an engine with a minimum of a thousand gallons to complement our three thousand gallon tanker. This particular engine's gonna have fifteen hundred, so, uh, we sacrifice some space, people, for water, which is more important, but it's gonna carry all our NFPA requirement equipment, which we forget that it's not all about fighting the fire, but everything on that truck, we, gives us the ability to get in and make a rescue. We don't carry ladders on our tanker. We don't carry air packs on our tanker. So, that, it's, it's critical to have an engine in the country to be able to do that. So, right now, we're making all kinds of arrangements to make sure that we're protected in our best ability in the country, but it's difficult. It's difficult. So, that's where we stand, and it's the last thing that we thought that we'd be here. We, we thought we would be good with a twenty thousand dollar purchase order that we did for repairs. We'd get a new tank in there, and then in three years, we'd decide what we're gonna do with Engine 3. Engine 3 is now at the town garage with no tank, and it's out of service. So, that's where we stand. I, I, I told Ryan that I would get him a number that I'm comfortable with, so that this board and Mr. Robinson can start to discuss what the options are moving forward, because the sooner, uh, or better, there's not many chassis available to build these trucks. Uh, this particular company that we're looking at right now, that's the most favorable out of the ones that may be out there, which we've looked at many, um, is on, uh, government contract, so we do get some discounting there, which is helpful for how we process our purchases here. So, that's extremely helpful. Tom was very happy about that to see, but we don't know. We don't know what's gonna bring four, five weeks down the road, I don't know if any of those chassis will still be available and/or the trucks will be available to build for us, but right now, it looks like they have a good stock to be able to do something for us if we're able to move forward in a.
That answered the question I was gonna ask you. The last time we talked about trucks, Bob, um, COVID had really just backed up the turnaround time, but it sounds like turnaround time is coming back to realistic again?
Yeah, we see, so you have, well, for these particular types of trucks. If I was to go out and had to purchase another Engine 2, you're still looking at three years. There is no way to purchase those trucks. So, there are some cookie cutter, and I call that, engines and tankers and things that are out there, that are currently being, they're just basically specced one way. You can make a few changes, but basically, you're buying what's on the lot. Um, these are really not on the lot. You think they are? You can go on a website, you can call these companies, and they can say that, we have these available. You call them, and they say, well, they're available for you to buy, but you won't see them for a year. So, you know, it's a, it's, it's changed so much on how you deal with. But we have some, I have, I can report, you know, unfortunately, the money's not, but there's, there's some good feedback as of today that there may be some avenues for us to go to. I just hope that they, I hope that they last until we can find out what to do, because that's, that's the issue.
Yeah, as Bob said, uh, the funding of this is still, uh, to be determined, but this is, this is one of those types of purchases that is, is critical for the town, and, uh, we, we do not expect to be in this position right now, and so Tom and I are going to work on options to present this board, uh, to move forward, uh, as soon as, as soon as possible, as soon as feasible. So, we hope, we hope to have more information on that for you soon, but I thought it was vital for Bob, uh, Chief Shea to come this evening and update this body on, on where we're at, because having, not having an engine out, you know, in the country is, is not something that, you know, we can sustain for, for a, a long time. So, we, we'll have to figure this out.
Yeah, it's one of those situations, as a chief officer, when the tone goes off, you're just hoping it's a medical, which is something that you really don't hope for, but in this situation, you're, you're hoping it's not something, you know, that we're gonna have to juggle things around, and, but you have a great department that is, they're basically, you know, on alert now, more so than ever, just for the fact that we are, we're running a little shy. And in the, in the country, if I gotta get Engine 1 or Engine 2 up to Great Hill Pond Road, that's gonna take a while. So, it's a lot of distance to cover on wheels. So.
Any other questions for Bob on this? Thank you for the update, Bob.
Yeah, you're welcome.
There'll be more to come, but, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, so, that's the, that means here. So, we'll move on to, uh, item C, which is a, a conversation to, on the antique MAC, number four fire truck, which, uh, Michael Tierney alluded to earlier in his public comments. I do have a letter before I, I, we invite, uh, David Pachinski, who's here, one of our volunteer firefighters, and I want to read the letter that, that, uh, David had submitted back, uh, over the summer, and this was to, I did share this with the board, I believe, back then, but I'll, I'll read it for you all again, so the public's aware of, of what we're talking about here. And it says, "The membership of Company 2 need to address an issue that for years has rested in limbo, and we want to bring it to your attention to hopefully resolve the situation. In short, we are looking to gain ownership of a piece of town property that is an asset and has value. The abbreviated history of the situation goes like this. In approximately nineteen eighty-two, the company and its members got permission to restore the nineteen forty-eight MAC number four, which was assigned to the firehouse since its purchase." And this is Company Number 2, by the way. Although many had a hand in the process, the main restoration was led by Robert Oakliff, Skip Oakliff, and Sal Tudy Petrazella. The process took almost three years and approximately thirty-five thousand of company, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars of company-raised funds. We have done all maintenance and repairs since at our own expense, but have occasionally used town marker plates to be at certain functions. The town fathers at the time retained ownership for the purpose of registration and insurance, but more importantly, to have the ability to keep it in the station. Several attempts to transfer ownership have hit stumbling, stumbling blocks, so things have remained status quo. Of note is, since that particular restoration, uh, Portland Fire Department 1 had ownership of their MAC number three transferred to them, and they were allowed to keep it in their station. We have since bought that truck from them to restore, so the. We have since bought that truck from them to restore, so the brother vehicle can be together. It is a pride and heritage thing. These vehicles are and will be used for fire department functions and often as casket coach for members deserving of that honor. I am certain there are components of the charter and governing, governing documents specific to selling or liquidating town assets uh, that need to be addressed. The membership is hoping there is a way to transfer out ownership of this asset or a way to purchase the asset for a dollar to legally own, so we can register and insure it. We would also hope to get dispensation from the town and be allowed to continue to store this vehicle at the station until there is no longer room for it. Please provide some direction as to how we can proceed to reach a conclusion of this decades old issue. I would be happy to meet at your convenience and I look forward to working with you and the board to reach a favorable outcome. Sincerely, David O'Pacinski, who is here with us this evening. Uh, David, would you like to come up to the, if you don't mind? But I, I wanted to read that into the record and I just wanted to, we haven't talked about this at a, at a public meeting. And so I, I honestly don't know the board's feelings on this. So I thought it would be good to have a dialogue this evening and, and, you know, if they have any questions for you on this, you know, they can ask. So thank you for coming and being here with us.
Thank you all very much for entertaining my request. I'm here representing the membership, uh, of the company, um, only because I'm one of the OG, one of the old dogs, that doesn't chase calls anymore, so I have time to chase other things. You know, that the heritage of, of the rig and there's members of this board, um, that are very familiar with, with its importance to the company and to the community and to the fire department. I think we're at a point where we have, we've adopted it. Now we just want to have the, the adoption papers to say that it's ours.
Well, when I first joined, I think one of the first meetings I joined Company Two was we discussed what lengths we were going to do with that truck. Uh, originally, we were just going to paint it. And then as the conversations went on, we decided we were going to do a ground up restoration. And we held, our French fry sales went to it. We had the truck raffles that went to it. And I remember when we tried to get ownership of it back then because we were scared that we would get this truck restored to the, to the specifications or to the likeness that Skip and Tootie wanted because they were very particular how that truck had to look. And that we were going to lose that truck. We were verbally told that the town wanted to sell it on us, so we continued. And, um, the truck is a great asset. Company Two, I'm no longer a member of Two's, but I'm still very active there. And, uh, you know, they set aside X amount of dollars a year for that truck. I talked to the treasurer on that and they still continue to fund any repairs that that truck needs. If you haven't seen that truck, you need to go down and look at that truck and see what we have that we restored and that this town has kept. It shows the heritage of the Portland Fire Department. It shows where we came from, where we are now. And while you're at it, you might want to look at the, the names on the walls down there that actually used that truck back in the forties and fifties and sixties. So.
The truck is revered statewide when we would do parades. Um, that was often a showpiece and now we are limited into the parades we do, but it does go, does go to the local car shows as recently as last year, it won, uh, Best In Class and Best Truck, I believe, at, at the Bell Town Show in East Hampton, which is, uh, one of the largest car shows certainly in the area. So it's, it's maintained that level of excellence that, that the membership put forward back in the early eighties.
Hey Dave, your letter says, "There were several attempts to transfer ownership and over the years, and it's hit stumbling blocks." You, can you just kind of give a quick synopsis of what those stumbling blocks were, if you can recall?
To the best of my knowledge, some of those stumbling blocks were, well, why bother? That, that was one, why bother? We're, we're just going to keep them in the firehouse and, you know, we'll keep it on our books. It's no big deal. Um, one of the subsequent was, who's really going to own it? Company Two is fortunate enough to have, uh, an association and an LLC, if you will. I believe it's an LLC, um, that's in charge of our recreation grounds at Indian Hill, which is a non-town entity. But it's, the company officers are our board of directors. So it's kissing cousins and that would be our, our baseline owner. And then quite honestly, it kind of gets forgotten about and we'll go across a piece of paper and go, oh yeah, we forgot about that. And then it stirs the memory, um, and then it'll get brought up again. And the last time it got stirred up, I was the one that listened to it and went, nah, I'll chase it.
So I, I do want to just point out, just for the record, that the town does not have any interest currently in, in selling this, in selling this truck. And it is a part of town's history and we're very proud and happy to have it near that company too. But at the same time, this is a request, you know, that's being made. And so, uh, I thought it was worth bringing to this board to kind of get a sense, uh, from this body that this was something that you, you felt was worth pursuing.
I think it is.
I, I agree with everything that he wrote in his letter. Because the, the truck wouldn't be in the shape it's in or where it is without them. The town did nothing to preserve it. They've done everything. And when it talks about the value of it, it's only because of what they did. So it's not like we're turning a big asset over to them that's so valuable. It's only valuable because of what they did to it.
I agree. I agree. Let's do it.
So with, um, with the, currently right now, the town is paying the insurance on the.
I believe Bob can answer it better to that, but I believe it is part of the town fleet at this point.
So what, I guess.
Well, it was part of the original transfer.
Actually, Bob, do you want to come up so you can get under it? Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was going to kind of be my, one of my questions is what, how is, how is it accomplished for the other vehicle? What was the process?
So the process was pretty simple back then. It might be different now. But, uh, we made a request and at that time, selectman Unikawitz, he took a dollar out of his pocket and passed it across the table and said, here's the dollar for the tran, my donating. He donated a dollar to, to, to make that transfer happen. So I don't know what it is, but I believe legally the dollar works. And it's a transfer from, a sale from the town to the department in this, in this regard, it would be to the LLC. And the association has the requirement to, under that agreement, has the requirement to insure it. And if it's stored in a town building, to make sure that they provide the insurance to the town, um, and each renewal, so that you know that it is insured in your building. And then if it becomes an issue with space, the town wins and the vehicle needs to be moved. And that was it. So I think, uh, you approve the transfer and then it happens however it may be.
I suggest that we look into whatever we need to do legally to transfer or sell it to them.
Agreed.
Might be a little different now, but.
Yeah, I, I have reached out to our town attorney to go over the process, so, um, so I can follow up on that. Uh, I just wanted before, you know, I went too far down that path, I wanted to bring it to the board and, you know, see if there was consensus at least. Uh, which it does seem like.
We've, we've got, I mean, I've lived in town all my life and a lot of, there's a lot of firemen here in the room. I said, we're, we're lucky to have the volunteer fire department that we have. And unfortunately, there's not a lot that we can do for our volunteer firefighters. This is something that they have restored themselves. And I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that they have access to it. It's.
Yeah, it carries the pride of the town on its doors. And when they have the ability to showcase that truck, it shines above all. It has since the day it's made the road since it's been restored. It's beautiful.
And it carries Tootie's legacy too. And, and who else? You say?
There's so many people.
I say let's, uh, try to move this thing and figure out what you need from us, Ryan.
Okay, so I guess I, I heard all I needed to hear today, so more to come. Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
So as soon as I have more information from our town attorney on this, I will bring this back to the board. Probably shouldn't be too long. Thank you. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is item D under new business. This is a contract award with Francesca Martin, PhD with Solutions For Community LLC. Fran Martin, who has been working with our current consultant. And you may recall Dale Krup, who's been our consultant for years on our, many of our grant projects, our shelter diversion project and recently our kitchen, uh, improvement project at the senior center. Dale has, uh, helped us write the grants and, and been a grant administrator for us for many years. And Dale is retiring as of December 31st of this year. So we certainly wish Dale the best in retirement. But with that, we needed a, a new grant consultant. And so we went out to bid. We had a, we issued an RFP and Solutions For Community, which is Fran, Francesca Martin. Uh, Dr. Martin had, uh, submitted the RFP and was the sole bidder on this. And so, uh, this is to award that contract agreement with Solutions For Community. So, um, Fran has done some great work. She continues currently to work with Dale through our shelter diversion grant as well as that kitchen grant. So she's no stranger to the town of Portland. So this is just a, a resolution to approve that agreement.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, you, we're going to waive the reading or?
Sure.
Why don't you just read it?
Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, December 20th, 2023. Contract agreement with Solutions For Community LLC. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes First Selectman Ryan J. Curley to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland, a contract with Francesca Martin, PhD, Solutions For Community LLC, 26 Bass River Lane, South Dennis, Mass., 02660, for RFP number 2024-07, Small Cities Community Development Block Program Professional and Technical Services Consultant. The hourly rate is 125 per hour. The consultant's total fee will not exceed available funds for a small cities program.
All right, Jim, I'd second it. Thank you, Sean. So any further discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. The next item is the pink resolution, I believe, in your packet. And this is an authorization for the First Selectman to sign a master municipal agreement or MMA. This is between the Town of Portland and the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation or DOT. And this is a, uh, this MMA, as it's known, is a document that needs to be signed once every 10 years. It's, it's good for 10 years. And so I need authorization from this board to sign it. I did bring with me the full agreement between the Town of Portland and DOT. And if anyone would like to read it, I have it here and it's 110 pages, but, so. But, um, but anyways, uh, if somebody would like to move the resolution, we can have further discussion.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Good. You want to read it?
I think you could read it. Yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated December 20, 2023. Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects between the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation and the Town of Portland. Whereas the Town of Portland municipality undertakes and might financially participate in municipal projects to construct improvements to roadways, structures and transportation facilities that are eligible for government financial assistance from the Department of Transportation, DOT, the federal government or both. Whereas the DOT is the authorized entity responsible for distributing the state and federal government financial assistance with respect to these municipal projects. And whereas on a project by project basis, either the DOT or the municipality takes on the responsibility of administering the construction phase of a particular municipal project. And the parties wish for this master agreement to address both DOT administered and municipality administered projects. Whereas the commissioner is authorized to enter into this agreement and distribute state and federal financial assistance to the municipalities for these projects pursuant to subsection 13A-23, 13A-98I, 13A-98N, 13A-165, 13B-4 subsection seven of the Connecticut general statutes. And whereas the DOT and the municipality wish to set forth their respective duties, rights and obligations with respect to these projects that are undertaken pursuant to this master agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Ryan J. Curley, First Selectman, is hereby authorized to sign the quote, "Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects," end quote, MMA, between the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, Connecticut DOT, and the Town of Portland. The 10-year term effective April 2024 to April 2034 of the agreement to allow for continued project work with the municipality while Connecticut DOT completes an overall update to the MMA.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sean. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Uh, next up is refunds of excess payments.
Uh, make a motion for a refund of excess payment for ACAR leasing limited, $452.49.
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Great, so we can move on to status and committee reports. I do have, uh, quite a few updates this evening, just to go, I'll go through quickly. Uh, one, some, some sad news for us. I did receive a resignation or retirement notice for our Sergeant Jim Kelly, who is leaving our police force on January 3rd after 29 years with the Portland Police Department. And so that's a big loss, you know, for the, for our police department, for the town. But, you know, we certainly wish Jim, uh, well, in, in a well-deserved retirement. And so, uh, there'll be more to come. I'll share some news. I think, uh, the police department will be doing a, a goodbye party for, for Sergeant Kelly. So, uh, more to come on that, but I did want to share that news. Uh, the good news is that, um, Sergeant Kelly's police, uh, partner, Magnus, is, is staying with the Town of Portland and will be transferring ownership. Uh, so stay tuned on that. Uh, more to come on that, but I did want to make you aware of that. And we touched on it earlier, but I do want to just, uh, touch on again that, uh, Chief Shea is, is stepping down as our fire chief after over 20 years. And, uh, I know, I can't thank Bob enough for all of his work on behalf of the Town of Portland and the Fire Department. And I'm going to miss working with him on that, in that capacity. But I mean, he's not leaving the, the Town of Portland. He'll still be with Portland Public Schools, so we're fortunate for that. But I know there's a, uh, there is an event in January 13th, I believe, that all the selectmen have been invited to, where we can certainly recognize Bob for his many years of dedicated service to the Town of Portland. And certainly I want to congratulate our new, uh, coming fire chief, Rob Pueta. Chief Pueta will be starting with the new year, as well as our deputy chief, Ryan Sweeney. So we're, we're in good hands, I know, with the two of them and congratulations to them both. Uh, looking forward to working with them. On our waterfront, Brian O'Halpin and myself, we had a meeting with GZA and DPH yesterday at Town Hall to, it was kind of a status update as what GZA has been working on. You may recall, they completed their initial, uh, well test over the summer and then gave a, a brief report on that, which was very favorable for the town pursuing water independence through a well at our Portland recreational complex or multiple wells. And so yesterday's meeting was to brief DPH of, on where we are at with this. GZA is still compiling a, a report that's going to be basically a how-to guide on the next steps on how to move forward with this process. And I'm told that that report will be ready around mid-January now. So just a couple more weeks on that report. But there's, there's a lot of work to do on this. DPH is, it was, it was very helpful and we look forward to working with them more on this. DPH is, it was, it was very helpful and we look forward to working with them more on this. So more to come. Uh, there, there are several, several thing, you know, hoops to jump through, I will say, when it comes to, when it comes to this. So it, it's going to take a little, you know, time, but we are working as quickly as possible on that. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that before I move on? Okay. All right. Uh, an update on Brownstone Avenue. Our contractor Enviro, uh, consultants and recyclers, they're on site this week. They're removing the last of the tar, the remaining concrete blocks, and they're backfilling and grading. I'm told that they should be done the, uh, this week, uh, next week. I think they're done this year. And then, uh, we're working with Tie and Bond on a couple other. There's groundwater monitor testing that has to be done for, uh, three consecutive quarters. That they're starting that now. So the grant's going to run through the end of, uh, 2024, but the bulk of the remediation has been completed. And we did receive some good news from DECD. You may recall that the town had been awarded a soft grant award of $500,000 for, uh, continued remediation of this site. That award was set to expire December 31st of this year, but DPH has extended that grant award. So when we do issue that RFP in the spring, we'll be able to, uh, have the extra, the extra boost of having that half a million dollar grant award to go with that as well. So that, that was good news from DECD, so I want to thank them for that. Uh, I also want to thank Mark Grover, who is our park attendant at the Port- Portland Recreational Complex. Mark continues to go above and beyond at the recreational complex and we are so fortunate to have him. I get, I received some texts from him recently with some pictures. And he had, uh, created sign holders for the rec complex that will make it easy when something's out of order. You, it's, it's a sign process. You just kind of slip in an out-of-order sign instead of having to, you know, paste, you know, tape things to, to places that don't look as nice. And I know, uh, Dean, Susie and Darlene Rice donated the materials to make that. So I just want to thank Mark and, and both Dean and Darlene for, for helping us continue to improve our park. It's utilized and we're just very fortunate to have Mark donating his time and energy to the town. Uh, our Great Blue survey, research survey on our school facilities is still out. Currently, as of today, there were 810 responses. I think there's actually 811. I had a, a handwritten survey that I had received. Speaking with Seamus, uh, the worker over at Great Blue, our researcher, he expects us to have a, be ready to present to this board on January 17th for a full report on that survey. So I wanted to ask the board if you felt that a special meeting? I was thinking we could potentially do a special meeting prior to a regularly scheduled meeting on the 17th with the Board of Education, so we could have a special joint meeting with, with them. Uh, do you think that 6:30 is, is too early? I was thinking 6:30, we could do 6, but that might be too early for folks who work. So I wanted to see what you guys thought for a start.
I think 6:30.
6:30 should work.
Have an idea of how long it should take?
It's going to be about a half an hour presentation and then add maybe another 10, 15 minutes for questions.
What's the date, right? Did you say 17?
I think it was the 17th. It's our, it's our second regularly scheduled meeting in January.
Gotcha, okay.
Yep. So if you guys agree with that, I'll look to do that for January 17th at 6:30. We'll get that out and we'll work. We may end up doing it in the auditorium at the school, depending on, you know, how many people we expect to, to come out. But if you haven't filled out your survey yet, please, please do it. All right. All right. That's good. All right. That's good. We hear a lot of, a lot of good feedback and, and I know the board saw, we saw some great comments on social media. I know we're all reading everything, so I, you know, we're not, you know, I want everybody to know we're taking everything into consideration. Uh, moving on, I want to give the board an update on our town GIS system that you may remember, we authorized a new GIS system. We, I did sign the contract and it is, Tie and Bond is, is going to be performing the work creating this. This is going to be great and they're going to be able to deliver this within the next four to five months. We'll have a, we'll, we'll finally have a modern GIS system in the Town of Portland, which is a long time coming. For a lot of people, we'll be very happy that we've gotten that. Also, our online permitting software is out. We have a request for qualifications out now. That is scheduled to end in mid-January and then we'll issue an RFP for that after that. But we're moving ahead with that as well and we're, we're excited to get the land use office, uh, up and, up and running in the 21st century here. Uh, I do have some news on our Portland library. We have some good news. The library was awarded a $51,997 grant from the State Library for network upgrades. And also they were awarded a new automated external defibr- defibrillator or AED from the In a Heartbeat Foundation. So our AED at the library had, was old and it had actually expired. And so our library director, Jennifer, applied for this grant and we, we were accepted for that. So that's a, a really nice award for the town to get that. So I want to thank and congratulate Jen for, for the good work on that. And I think that was all my update. I do want to say I did share with the, the Board of Selectmen, a proposal that DOT has shared with me on the Route 9 redesign. So there'll be more to come on that. I, I just wanted to brief you all and mention that a Route 9 redesign is being proposed by DOT. And there is a problem that I believe the Town of Portland will have with their current proposal. And that is the elimination of the, uh, northbound turning lane to get onto the Aragoni Bridge for those traveling on Route 9 North. So the current proposal that DOT has put forward has cars kind of going down, being funneled through Decoven Drive and also Main Street, Middletown. So those coming up Route 9, trying to get into Portland, would have a great deal of lights to go through. And I know the city of Middletown, I don't believe, is, is very much in favor of this proposal either because they don't want cars that don't want to be there on their roads. And also I, I think the, uh, Middlesex Chamber of Commerce has heard from Middletown businesses who, who don't want that either. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to make you all aware that we may have to make our voices heard on that in the, in the near future. So, all right. That's all my updates. Does anybody else have anything?
My only other committee was, uh, conservation and they postponed the last meeting, so I've got nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just got, uh, I did go to the, the Water and Sewer, uh, meeting. And a couple of quick up, quick updates. One, um, we're required every year to buy 146 million gallons from MDC. Uh, basically we're 20 million gallons off of that. So right now they're basically focusing on buying water, uh, to hit that mark, but not go over, which is actually the best, best thing for our budget. Um, so far they've spent $675,000 to MDC. Uh, one of the reasons why I think it's important that we, we're successful for our, our own water source. Uh, good news though is that MDC, uh, is not, there's no rate change for the 2024. So the rates as they sit right now for, for Portland water, um, from MDC, are they going to stay the same? They did advise that the Hilltop and Perry Ave, uh, water jobs are complete, that the award letters for the jo- for the work that we approved at the, for Co Ave and for Russell, uh, those award letters did go out. And, uh, that's, that's actually probably it for Water and Sewer. And then Parks and Rec. Um, they noted they have a couple of programs that have started, have now since started. One, a cheerleading program at Biz and Skyhawks Youth Basketball. They currently have 11, um, 11 basketball teams for the, for three, grades three to eight. Um, so they're, they're healthy. Other programs they're noting have contracted, but actually they're doing, they're doing well. Um, they were very pleased with how the tree lighting went and there was a lot of work. And they, they, they were again, very appreciative of all the folks that shifted their plans and very happy that there ended up being 200 people, uh, that, that showed up. They got a, they got a good turnout. Um, one of the things that came out of that discussion was moving it to Saturdays on a regular basis. And then you have Sunday as your rain date. Um, easier to slip it in that direction. But the fact that they thought that should, one of the things that helped the turnout was the fact that, um, it wasn't on a, you know, for example, a school night. It was a little bit easier for families to get out and about. And the Easter egg hunt, because of how, uh, Easter falls this year, is going to be earlier than normal. Uh, so it'll be a nice warm one on March 23rd at 11:00 AM. The rain date is the 24th. So that's Parks and Rec and Water and Sewer.
Thank you, Jim. So we'll have our St. Patrick's Day and then we'll have a Easter egg hunt. If you do them in the wrong order, we'll all get in trouble. All right. Any other status and committee reports? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? Oh.
I just wanted to say to Fire Department.
Could you, could you find say on the record, Sharon?
And make sure, make sure you please, you give your name and address so that the recording clerk can hear it.
Sharon Hoy, 33 Rose Hill Road. I just wanted to thank the Fire Department and everyone involved in that parade on Saturday night. I think they did a wonderful job this year. And it's great that young and old can enjoy it, as well as those who may not be able to get out to the tree lighting or other festivities. So great job and I hope they keep it up in subsequent years.
Thank you, Sharon.
I think we all agree, that was pretty cool. It was cool. Those, those VW bugs lit up. They were really cool. Yeah.
And that was one of those things that's, I think, started during COVID and it was such a hit that I think the Fire Department has to just keep doing it. So we, we certainly thank them for that. It's great. Uh, and more public comment?
Andrea Alfano, 3 Plumrose Court. Um, I think you already have a family precedent, um, on youth services board. You have Michelle and Sarah Donahue, who are mother and daughter. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and perhaps you can vote tonight on Bob Hunter. I don't know if that changes anything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we have multiple precedents, Bob.
Yeah, I just want to just, you know, I, I'm not a, like I said, it's just.
No, 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 I know this, no, it's not in contention, you just want to.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, anyone online? I don't see anyone. Online? Okay. Uh, Board of Selectmen, general informal discussion? Does anyone have anything this evening?
I just, I got a question with the Park and Rec Department. I saw recently, I was reading their minutes and they had, they had just purchased a, a fence for the new park. I was just curious, where, where the fence is going and what type of fence they bought?
Yeah. So the, the fence that they're talking about, um, is actually, I guess, going to be at least, um, for the most part funded with low-sit money. Um, it's going to go in between the soccer fields and the parking area. And the idea is they don't want any kids playing, to be basically running towards the parking area going after a ball. So it'll provide a little bit of security kind of in both directions, but it's really to protect the, protect the kids.
We do have our Chair of Parks and Recreation here with us. I don't know. Karen, do you have anything else to add on that?
No.
So that's good. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Chain Link and Six Foot Tall?
It, it's actually going to be the black vinyl. Basically it's going to match the remainder, the rest, the rest of the park. Um, it was, uh, priced out via state bid pricing, is my understanding. Um, there's no, because it's not, for example, an outfield fence where you're worried about kids running towards it to catch a ball blindly and things like that. It's not going to, they're not going to put the same yellow protection on the top of it as it currently exists. Um, you know, for, for the baseball fields, but otherwise the fence is going to match.
All right, yeah. No, I'm all for it. I believe it's a big safety factor for some kids running out into the parking lot. My only concern was aesthetically, the way it looked. I was just afraid it was going to be a steel chain link fence. It'd look like a prison yard or a courtyard, you know?
No, no, it's, it's going to match.
Yeah.
It'll match.
Okay, thank you.
That's the nice thing about the black actually, is it, it, that black vinyl, it, it helps visually.
Yep.
I thought you were getting it using the 1,300 feet we have. That's all we can.
That's all I have.
Anything else for general informal discussion? Okay. Uh, follow-up items. So we have, uh, we have our ethics ordinance, our review of town charter, uh, and our policy on fixing real property assessments. I don't know if anybody had anything this evening on that? If not.
Got some next month, maybe?
Yeah, I think we should.
We should start moving on.
Put it on the schedule.
I think we, I think what we were talking about are the policy on, on fixed real property assessments. I know we do have an application that's coming before the board in January on this. And I think there was some interest in revisiting that policy and perhaps updating it and making it a little more current. So that's something that we can do at a future meeting. So, uh, before we adjourn, it's our last meeting before the holidays, so I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, happy new year, uh, merry Christmas, and we will see you, uh, in January.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.